If everyone would please take your seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting of the Peoria City Council. This is a special meeting on the two thousand and twenty-five revised budget. This is one of three budget meetings that are scheduled through, I think, November fifth, which is Election Day, right?
Yeah.
We'll be here on Election Night.
Vote early.
I'd like to welcome everyone who's in our historic City Council chambers, as well as those that are joining us through WCBU and the audience that's watching on Cable Channel twenty-two. Madam Clerk, the mics, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Clerk? We have one town item. Twenty-four dash two ninety-nine is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to approve the proposed estimated tax levy of one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars with an estimated tax rate not to exceed zero point zero seven seven four three zero for the town of the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have our township officials, some of them here tonight, and perhaps one of them would like to provide some analysis as to how the town officials came to this particular tax levy. Don't all jump up at the same time. Thanks, Latrina Leary.
Good evening. So I am going to pass the buck to Townness Assessor Max Shafley to kind of give a little bit more in-depth on how we came to this, this tax levy. We really haven't changed the numbers at all. However, the levy is going down, the rate, the levy rate is actually going to decrease. And so I'm going to have Max kind of give a little bit of feedback on how that came about.
Okay, the rea- okay, I'll just start out. Good evening. And the reason why the rate is going to come down, we're, we're asking for a slight increase in the levy. The amount we're asked, the amount of dollars we're asking is about three percent. Now, the assessments this past year in two thousand and twenty-four, they rose approximately nine percent. So the net effect is going to be, the rate should decrease. Now, we're still, the Board of Review over at the counties in session, and typically, they reduce assessments or assessments get reduced approximately a quarter percent to a half percent during their session. And that session goes to the end of the year typically. And so that's all, the hearing's having actually started, and we're, we're preparing evidence to submit to the Board of Review to defend the assessments or not. And we review every assessment, a complaint, and if we can defend it, we do, and if we can't, we don't. And so the net effect of the rate decreasing is going to be about six percent drop in the tax rate from last year.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Assessor, Madam Supervisor. Any questions? Any questions from the trustees? Okay, Trustee Grab.
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Trustee Jackson. Any discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at the city portion of the agenda. Twenty-four dash three hundred is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller to approve the Peoria Civic Center two thousand and twenty-four annual report and two thousand and twenty-five annual budget. And on your desk, there is a handout of updated slide presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us Rick Edgar this evening and as well as members of the ASM team, the Peoria Civic Center Authority and the Civic Center team. So what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to Mr. Edgar. Not only does he have this presentation to provide, but we also have really the, the measure of approving their annual budget, which is part of this agenda item as well.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Edgar.
Thank you for having me.
General Manager.
Thank you. It is my honor to represent my leadership team here tonight in the Peoria Civic Center and tell you what's happened over the last fiscal year at our venue. We want to kind of tell a story tonight, and what gets lost is we are truly a complex by name, but also by nature. There's a lot of things that go into doing our building. It's not just booking shows or hosting events. Everybody has a different idea of what they would like to see at our venue. So if you're a Gen Xer like myself, we remember the Different Strokes song, "Well, might be right for you, may not be right for all." So we try to do a little something for everyone. Our audience tells us what they want to see. It's a very capitalistic society. They buy tickets when they're engaged, they come to events, and that's how we know if it's working. We also have to avoid tunnel vision. If we stay focused on just doing one thing well, we're going to fail. We have to generally broaden our audience to have great success. Venue utilization, and this is one that you probably don't think about unless you're in my role, in our team's role every day. We have to be aware of what's going on in the entire venue, not just what's going on in the arena or the theater. For example, if we have a large concert in the arena, we may not be able to do an event in the theater due to staffing issues, parking, and other things like that. So it's a very complex role that we have. And my partner next to me, Bo Sutherland, who does the Convention Center, our offices are side by side for a reason. Every day we talk to make sure that everything can works in synergy, and if it doesn't, sometimes we pass on events. The biggest thing is relationships in our industry. It really comes down to trust. Folks bring us their events if they trust we're going to treat them right, have a great event. Revenues matter because we're in show business, not show fun. Folks are coming to make money in our market and bring events to us and also entertain our population. And also the venue experience, and this is something we're really excited about this year. We felt like we had the best staff possible. The venue sometimes let us down, but with recent renovations, we now feel like we're on an even playing field with a lot of our competition. I want to talk about relationships and a little bit of stories. And here's two that, just to let you know how the game works. I was on a dais a couple of years ago in Nashville, and this gentleman walks up to me with a, you know, one of those pork pie boiler hats, had a very droll kind of way about him. He goes, "Hi, my name's Tag. I'd like to do business with you eventually." Two years later, he brings us the violent films. And most people thought, "This show doesn't work in our market." I asked my millennials in the office, and nobody had a clue. It ended up being our single most successful event for us in the theater concert-wise last year. Again, you just don't know when you're going to meet somebody, and sometimes it takes years to pay off. In our Convention Center, we had an event for Bondi, which is a card game for two hundred people. That two-hundred-person event led to another event, led to another event. Eventually, over about a eighteen-month period, we then hosted the Pokemon Regional Championships. We actually took it away from St. Louis. Our team let them know that we were going to treat them well. It was an important event for us. We had ninety-five hundred participants come to Peoria. Almost everybody was from somewhere else, staying in our hotels and eating in our restaurants. The results have been fantastic. Without any reservation or any kind of asterisk, FY twenty-three and twenty-four are the best years of the venue. We say dating back to two thousand and seven because most of our records that we can compare to go back to the remodel of two thousand and seven. Going back to relationships, one of the things that we do is we don't just work with one person or two people. In the arena, we had thirteen different promoters. Some of them brought us multiple events, some may bring us one. And in the third, in the theater, we had over twenty people that we were working with to bring us events, different companies. Once they have success, we've been able to grow that market. But it's not just touring events. We also do local. This past year, our symphony and ballet and orchestra, dance studios that are all here, over fifteen thousand folks attended those events, which are really targeted at just a local market. Our Convention Center income increased by nine percent. For some of you who have been on this council, coming out of COVID, the Convention Center was decimated. Those events took the longest to get together because you're bringing people in a gathering space where it's not a touring show. They have to get people from other communities and get travel budgets approved to see that go up. And also, the Convention Center had its best financial year in over twenty years. So we're seeing that market come back. We do marketing and advertising, and why we wanted to point this out is, not only is our social channels growing, but when we do these events in town, a lot of these promoters are not from the area. Over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was spent in the market with our local media companies to advertise these events. We're now working on some new things that we're going to talk about a little bit later, about how we're going to target to get more people to our events through some of our initiatives. We rely on tenants. We have five primary tenants, kind of going in reverse order. We have the symphony and the ballet in our theater. We also have Bradley basketball in their arena. We have Riverman hockey in the arena. And we also have the American Theater Guild Broadway series in our theater. All of these showed increases in attendance last year and success. So we got to keep watching because our market and our business changes faster than almost any business in the world. So one of the things that we found last year is we became a very popular rehearsal spot. I applaud my team for keeping it quiet, but as some of you know when you read the papers, we had folks like Chris Brown and Charlie XCX and Kay Lani come to our venue to rehearse their national tours. While we're not quite big enough to get those shows in our market, they come into town and they spend money. They come with sometimes multiple hotel rooms. Sometimes we were getting two hundred and three hundred hotel stays just for the tours. And I'm happy to report, we do these events not so much that it's a revenue generator for the building, but it's great for the local economy and more importantly, for our team members on the IATSE Union. With the four rehearsals that we did, we generated over a half million dollar in labor bills that were paid by these shows to them. It was fantastic work, and we had a lot of fun. HRA, we're always watching it because not only are we funded that way, but when we create events, we know that it spikes, the events in the HRA. And through our relationships with the hotels and the CBB, we found out that more than half of the top ten, top fifteen events in the entire community all were traced back to PCC events. We drive the economy in the HRA. Comedy, we're going to get to that. It was No Laughing Matter this year. Comedy was a huge success, and it's been a really new thing, the amount of events that we're getting from the comedy sector this year, and it was really great for our bottom line. What's next? We don't know. It's one of those things of what's going to be the next hot thing? Because the artist that's selling out an arena today may not be able to fill a theater tomorrow. So we're always looking for that next thing. And we've sounds, we'll have some things that we're going to talk about in the Convention Center that we're seeing coming up. And then I think the ones that we really love are the unexpected wins because we do so many different events, sometimes we get surprised. And this is a story that we absolutely love. The Missions of Mercy, for the folks that don't know, it was an event where we provided dental care in our venue with a lot of volunteers and brought folks into the community. We actually found out that was over fifty-five Illinois counties participated, three states. But what we didn't know, and when we booked this, we were doing this as this is going to be a nice event, it's not going to be revenue generating. Well, the hotels called us and the restaurants said, "We're sold out." All of these folks that came into town spent money to participate in this event. So while that was not the primary reason for doing it, it had a really wonderful side effect that helped our local economy. Talking about comedy, we did a record amount of shows last year. We had fourteen events. Some of you can do math, so there's twelve, but two of the concerts did twice. Shane Gillis and Nate Bargatze did two shows. These events are relatively easy on our staff because it's a bar stool, bottle of water, and a microphone most of the times. But we set record numbers in comedy shows last year, and it was really a shot in the arm of our total economic impact of the events. We try to do something for everybody. So we don't just do country shows, we don't just do rock. If you just look at, this is a small sample. We have family events like Bull's Bands and Barrels and AEW Wrestling. We do Christian contemporary events, Maverick City, Phil Wickham. We looked, we started leaning into doing a little more of the urban and hip-hop events. We had My Playlist Two Thousand in Monica last year. We also had like classic entertainers like Bonnie Raitt, Whiskey Myers, and then the typical country and rock shows. The really cool thing is we don't have much of any one genre, and because of the market that we live in, we're able to support all kinds of genres, which is very unique in the entertainment industry. Then it comes down to the brass tacks. Everybody wants to know, are we running it like a business, and how are our numbers? In the middle, you'll see we did seven point three million dollars in adjusted gross income. That is a new venue record. Last year, we did six point nine, and before that, we'd never had a year above six point two. For two years in a row now, we have done over thirteen million dollars in ticket sales. We just missed a half million guests last year, and our concessions were at a record of three point eight million. We're doing events, folks are coming from out of town as well as in-town spending money, and we're watching our events go up. Last year, I was proud to say that we almost did an event every day in the building. Well, this year, we did four hundred and one. We had more than one event every day of the year in the venue. This is a slide that I think as elected officials you want to hear. A lot of folks consider venues as tax subsidized. We want to remind you that last year, we spent, we spent one point two million dollars in taxes direct from our events. This isn't the side events like the hotels, restaurants. This is what we've paid back to the city and the state. When we do more activity and we have more success, you've seen that number has more than doubled since fiscal year eighteen. This is something that we feel really good about because we're now getting to the point where we're almost spending as much in taxes as we're receiving back. Venue updates. I'm going to tell you, this is not all the events we did. And we did this on purpose because I'm going to invite each of you at the council individually. Please give me a call, give my staff a call. We're really proud of what we've been doing. We want to show it to you in person. But there is two, the big scoreboard will get the most attention, and the carpet, the one that you see closest to you in the blue, that's the new. The ugly brown stuff, that's the old. It is just a fraction of the progress we've made, and we're really happy about all these things that we've been able to do because my VP is in town from ASM Global because they've also participated in advancing some money to have these projects move. And he said, "Oh, my gosh, this looks like a brand-new venue." And that's something that we've taken a lot of pride in because we think our success has allowed us to be able to do this. Multi-year commitments. We're not any good if we don't have partners. There's three, there's a lot of these partners up here, but there's three I wanted to point out. On the far right is the Peoria Power Play. That is a volleyball tournament that is now coming to us with a multi-year deal. They saw our venue and went, "This is perfect for what we're doing." We also have a youth wrestling tournament that was in another community in Illinois who moved to us, and they said, "We want to come to Peoria because you can do the full event." We always had to cut it in half and do it on separate weekends, and those events are going to be in twenty-five. Two that have a really good impact for long-term, American Theater Guild, that's our Broadway presenter. We signed a long-term deal with them. And the reason why we did that to go through twenty-eight is while this year, we're really excited about Wicked, and that's a great event to have, by having a long-term deal, we can then get those blockbuster titles because we have a partner that's invested with us because it takes, believe it or not, sometimes five and ten years to get the big title. So we don't say Hamilton out loud too often, but we're trying to target it. And by this relationship, this gives us a much better chance of bringing that event to our community. And the really big one is Live Nation's number-one promoter in the world. Before, it was always a one-off. We've now signed a multi-year deal with them that gives them incentives to bring us more events. Again, we're trying to solidify the business for the long term. So let's talk about our wins. We love to humble brag a little bit. Over the last two years, we've done one hundred and forty ticketed events. These are events that are one-offs, where you buy tickets, you come to events. While our tenants make up sixty percent of the event usage, our revenue comes from the touring shows. Sixty-six percent of the net revenue we make on night of show funds our budget. The arena alone has seen our annual revenue over the ten-year average go from about one point four to one point five to now we're averaging three point three million in revenue. We've doubled those revenues, which then gives us more opportunities to do other things. In the theater, we actually were kind of surprised to find out that FY ten was our best year. Remember, we talked about comedy? It was comedy-driven. Shane Gillis selling out two shows, Nate Bargatze, Jerry Seinfeld. I mean, we had a who's who of comedy. Those shows were all selling out and doing fantastic business. Not only is Wicked a cool show for us to have, and we're excited that it's coming, it has driven our subscribers to record numbers. We now have over fifteen hundred subscribers in our Broadway series, and we're seeing it grow each week. As we get closer to Wicked, we expect that number to continue to grow. This goes back to the heyday of Broadway. We were buying it by ourselves. This is the most subscribers we've had under subscription since we've had a Broadway series. The Convention Center. This is the one that was a little bit surprising when you look at it at the end of the year because it was so hit hard from the shutdown. We saw an eight percent increase from last year, but we took it back to the last full year. We're up thirty percent. We really have started targeting sporting events to come to our venues. That leads to volleyball, wrestling. We also are really big with the Pokemon and esports. These events we really like because it's not just one day, they're multiple days. And when you have multiple days, you tend to stay in our hotels. If you have a one day, you may come and leave, and this generates the downtown economy as well as for us. We are expecting that wrestling and volleyball to bring thirty thousand guests to us over two separate weekends. That's a lot of folks coming into our little venue. And the one thing that we've taken a lot of pride in is when I came into the market in eighteen, we were giving incentive money equal to what we were getting back. So it was a net zero. We're now getting a five-to-one return. So if you can get an ROI of five-to-one versus one-to-one, it shows that we're investing our money wisely and not just giving money away. So we got to look at, now we're going to talk about some of the things that may be challenges or future considerations. Government mandated wage increases. These are going to hit the industry of events probably harder than most. If the mandated wage increases from, that we're anticipating coming to place in January one, our payroll is going to go up twenty-three percent. So that impacts our ability to keep rates low and that, and all the things that go with that. They haven't been finalized yet, but every indication is that's coming. Our expenses are up. It's not just labor, as everyone knows labor is up, but utilities are up. And one of the big ones is insurance. Our industry has been hit one of the hardest because we're safety shelters. And even with all the investment we put in the building this year, we're still seeing our insurance rates rise at twenty percent. Some of our sister venues in other markets are seeing their insurance rates go up as much as thirty-five and forty percent. It's just a burden, and when our insurance rates are in the well-six figures, this adds up really quickly. What most of you may not think about, it's an election year. Now, I know as elected officials, you think about it, but when we have an election year in the entertainment industry, people tend to hold their money because no matter what side of politics they're on, and we don't care, they tend to be cautious. What's going to happen after the election? So sometimes they pass on a show because they just want to have that little nest egg until they get some satisfaction. Our insurance rates, one thing I did want to point out is we just, with all the renovations, we did get best-in-class, which means we're as the best that you can be to get insured in the entertainment industry. Had we not done the renovations, I can tell you that we were told we were uninsurable. We would not have had, be able to take insurance on one of the biggest assets that is part of the city. The other thing that we noticed is coming out of the pandemic, we had what we refer to as LFT daughters, dollars, live for today. Folks were so happy to get back out, they didn't care what things cost. We're starting to see those things regress back. Folks are going, "Wait a second, one hundred and fifty bucks for a ticket? I might take a pass." Whereas before, it was just, "Here's my credit card." So here's some of the challenges that we're seeing in the macroeconomy everywhere that impacts our business. So Disney's discounting for the first time in their history. We saw restaurant closures even here locally in Peoria. Concert tours were pulling down. They were saying, "We're not selling enough tickets to even go on tour and pay for the, you know, the petrol to go into the bus." Starbucks discounted for the first time. But to tell you there's help on the way, as of this morning, we were talking, Starbucks actually announced they're stopping discounting because they're seeing the market come back, so that's a positive. Target actually got aggressive and started reducing prices and changing things, and they saw sales go back up. And then the one that we watch the most, ticket prices. Fans, remember I told you the audience will tell you how they feel? They've been telling us, "Sometimes enough's enough. We're not going to pay that for that act anymore." So we're having to look at it, what's the right price point for the right show? But it's not all doom and gloom. Those are things that we're worried about, but it's also stuff that we're watching, and we're trying to figure out how to have a better year coming ahead. In marketing, we as being acquired by Legends have an artificial intelligence component to us now. So we're going to start using AI to help us target audiences that want to come to our shows. In the test markets, we saw increases in ticket sales that use this technology. Grab and Go. For those who haven't been, we've now added a whole new set of food options in our arena. So we've now added Grab and Go stands. What we found out is people want convenience and speed. You literally can go grab a beer, run it through the register, and like. So if you just want a beer, you don't have to stand in the food line. We, first few shows, we've seen the Grab and Goes are actually our top-selling areas because people really love that option. And the guest experience. We have new sound system, scoreboards, ribbon boards. We've put up over fifty screens in the arena to help you get to your next spot, and there's nowhere in the arena during a Bradley or Riverman game where you won't be able to watch the game if you're waiting in line or just talking to a friend on a concourse. We think coming in, it looks cleaner, it looks newer, and even the bathrooms have been renovated. It's going to be a better guest experience, and when people have a good time, they come back. So have you bought your tickets? I mean, that's the thing that we're going to get to. While Wicked has been out there, one of the, all these shows are just a very small sample. We're bringing Pentatonix back, which had sold out our venue two years ago. It's on a Saturday night during Christmas. What, not a better way to spend your time? And I think one that kind of stood out of all these great shows is Brooks and Dunn. Brooks and Dunn doesn't tour very often, and they don't play many cities. They had twelve cities on their tour, Peoria, Illinois is in there. It's really cool when you see cities like Indianapolis, Chicago, and Peoria. We made the cut, we're by far the smallest city on the tour, and it's something we're really happy that we were able to bring to this community. And finally, Ted Lasso is my hero. If you're taking a challenge, it's like riding a horse, and if you're comfortable when you're doing it, you're probably doing it wrong. We're uncomfortable all the time. But by being uncomfortable and finding problems, we're always looking for solutions. And these guys back here do a great job. So with that, that's our annual report.
Wow. Well, Mr. Edgar, thank you for bringing such fantastic news. Yeah, I heard a clap. Let's give him a hand. This is a far cry from two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, I think, most of two thousand and twenty-two, when we were in and trying to bounce back from a pandemic. Your doors were shut. It was very painful time for the Peoria Civic Center and Civic, and, you know, this type of operation. But you've been resilient, and these are record-breaking results. Great news for our economy. It's certainly an economic driver for the city of Peoria. So I want to thank you for your leadership and your team's leadership. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Brian Crow from ASM Global. Drove here from Chicago, and you're welcome to say a few words if, if you'd like, Mr. Crow.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be here today, visiting Rick and our team at the Peoria Civic Center. As you can see, we take great pride in our partnership with the city of Peoria. ASM Global, now part of the Legends Family Companies, is very proud of our relationship. We have a lot of great things, I think, that are going to be coming. to be coming, are coming out to the field and will benefit clients like the city of Peoria. And I just want to thank all of you for your continued support of the Civic Center and thank the Civic Center Authority and the board and their leadership and partnership with us to be able to be able to create this great opportunity for the citizens of your community and have such great events and activities in the facility. It's great to see that you're able to continue to invest in the building. As Rick pointed out, a number of capital projects have gone underway that have really brought life back to the facility. I was on a tour this afternoon, and I was here a year ago as well, to see the difference in that investment that you have made and how that's really going to, really going to pay forward for your community as well as the guest experience that Rick was talking about. It's really just incredible. So we, once again, thank you guys for your support of our team. And I want to thank the staff, our staff at the Peoria Civic Center. You have great leadership and Rick and a great team that work on behalf of the folks here in Peoria every single day. And I think you can see that from the results of their fiscal '24. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilman Tim Regenbach is our liaison on the Civic Center Board. And we want to also hear from you, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would echo the mayor's sentiments. Mr. Crow, we appreciate the leadership that you provide at the high end of things and that your commitment to Peoria is obvious as in the time I have been the representative on the board, I've met you a couple of different times. So thank you for being here this evening. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't introduce the staff from ASM locally here that's here. We got Greg Wilson, the new food manager, Mindy Bauman in finance, Will Kenny, who knows that building inside and out like the back of his hand, Bo Sutherland in sales, Rick Simonis, the authority chairman, and Bob Gates, the attorneys for the authority. So it's been my pleasure to serve on the authority as our representative. And it's just been tremendous. I just want to reiterate the Cliff Notes version, if I say can. If you heard anything Mr. Edgar said, the city of Peoria is collecting about $500 million in tax revenue from the Peoria Civic Center. That's a very nice number for us to wrap our arms around. 500,000 guests coming in and out of that building over 401 days. I thought there was 365 days in the year, but somehow they got 401 event days going on there. So let me just give you one anecdote on a personal level. I was at the Brandon Lake concert Saturday night with my son, Sam, and there was a mom and a couple of young girls with, sitting next to us. And I said, so are you folks from Peoria? And she goes, no, we're actually from Appleton. So when you talk about the draw that the Peoria Civic Center has, believe it or not, this mom and her two daughters drove from Appleton, Wisconsin.
Oh, my God.
Spent the night in our hotels, ate at our restaurants, so that some of that $500,000 are attributed to that very family, you know. So I don't think we can understand enough the impact that the Civic Center has and the relationships that Mr. Edgar has throughout the community, the promoting community. So hats off to you guys. Keep up the good work. And we'll be getting in line for those wicked tickets. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And can you, Councilman Regenbach, do you want to make a motion?
I'll move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. More discussion. Councilmember Valpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, congratulations on the increased revenue at the Civic Center this fiscal year. Could you, so when I looked at the bar graph, which shows the data from 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24, it's phenomenal to see there is a linear increase in the revenue. But I also would appreciate if you can send an updated slide. Even though we did not make any progress on 2021, this slide looks skewed. So I just wanted to see, even though it is a red bar.
Sure.
It would be very nice for us to see from where you started and where we are today.
Absolutely. That won't be an issue.
That's the first thing. The second thing is, could you just share the key factors that contributed to this phenomenal growth? And your slide presentation also has an answer where you show Red Lobster is closing, people are not coming. So what kind of additional strategies do you have in place to kind of sustain this upward trajectory in the next year?
Yeah, it's, our industry moves really rapidly and quick, so you're trying to stay on trends. So to answer that question, we did opposite what a lot of venues did in the third quarter of this year. A lot of venues were so desperate for shows, they started overpaying to bring shows to their markets, and they made the problem worse. We're in this as a marathon. So what we did is we made very strategic decisions that have paid off to not go after some of those events. Because in our estimation, using our resources at ASM Global and looking, we're like, don't make problems worse by being overly aggressive. And we told our board that. We're like, hey, you've been seeing this great growth. This year, we're going to see a pullback. And we explained the election and things that were working against us. Now, what I will say is our spring is looking kind of stupid good. And that's my term. No, not a professional term. And as things are coming out, because those events that have been skipping are waiting. So what we do is we look for new revenue sources. So for example, when we showed you the rehearsals, rehearsals is usually something that folks don't want. They want the shows. Now, we always say we'd like to have the rehearsal and the show. But what we looked at is in the summer, when we were doing all these renovations, we picked pockets of time. And then we invited in the Chris Browns and the Charlie XCXs to spend money in town to keep our revenues going. So it's, we have our tenants, which you can kind of put into a box, but then we're also looking to fill. One of the challenges we have is we're out of weekends. So starting this, you know, starting next week, we actually have something in the building this weekend, but it's not a public event. We go from October until almost the end of May, we don't get a weekend off. So to answer your question, I think our strategy is working. And I wish I could give you a typical business model. Like, here's what we're doing two years from now and five years. It's usually a much tighter timeline than that. I hope that answered your question.
It did.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Yes.
Oh.
Make that motion to approve.
Yes.
Because that includes the Civic Center budget. So I move to approve as presented.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen, right? Okay. Very good. Councilmember Grant?
Mr. Edgar, could you comment a little bit on what our relationship is and the basic tenor of the relationship with both Bradley University and their use of our facility as well as the Riverman hockey team?
Yep. Both are excited about the new updates we've had in the venue. Bradley in particular. We'll take one at a time if it's okay. When Bradley had come to us, they wanted to be the marquee team in the Missouri Valley Conference. And our facility made it a little challenging to recruit perhaps. So now they have not a venue in the Missouri Valley, they've got the best venue. And they were just selected to be the top team in the league. One of the things that we work with them with two tenants, it can be a little challenging. Remember, we talked about different strokes. With schedules being set in advance, sometimes that makes it hard for Bradley to get those national TV games because the dates are blocked. So because basketball does not schedule their dates until October, and the other schedules are already out. I would say, talk to Chris Reynolds, always say, talk to the folks, Coach Wardle and Brad Chandler at Bradley. I think the relationship's fantastic, and they're very excited about the upcoming year. With Riverman, we made some great strides. Part of what we were talking about, remember the uncomfortable comment we did at the end there with Ted Lasso? We kind of had them move into some places where they thought it was a little uncomfortable. And I'm happy to say that last year, they had their best revenue year under the current ownership. So their numbers were good, and they've come to the table. And we don't talk about ongoing negotiations, but I can say that the Civic Center Authority has been meeting with them regularly and has put an offer on the table, which is better than what they currently have. It's just a matter of when they feel comfortable enough to sign it.
So that's still in motion then?
Absolutely.
The other thing that I haven't heard recently, thankfully, is some folks thinking that Bradley basketball should be turned to the Hilltop. And I hope that's quieted down the past few years. I can tell you, as councilman for the second district, the neighborhoods around Bradley, I don't know what they would do with the cars, that they did bring it back there.
I can honestly say without any reservation, that's never been a serious conversation since I've been in the market.
Thank you, General Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Doug. Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Exciting times this past year at the Civic Center and looking forward to exciting times in '25. Can you speak to any qualitative data that you may have obtained from customers that come to the Civic Center based off of some of the things that we need to start thinking about as far as supporting you? Is it amenities in the area? Is it the convenience of parking? Is it the perception of public safety? Some of the things that they may be giving you feedback when they're saying they're coming to our city and some of the things that we can work on trying to approve as we look to anchor our strategic plan initiative of downtown development?
Yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate the question because that's something we think about daily. We do get feedback. Not all of it's great. I think you hit on safety. We had one event that had been coming to us for years in the convention center, and they said that they felt uncomfortable around the building at night. So we're taking that seriously. We're making some strides within the venue to make it feel a little more, not so much isolated, but just a safer environment. So we do have parking attendants, we do things of that nature. But I think it's a bigger issue than just the Civic Center. What are we going to do in the downtown to make folks feel at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, when it's dark, they're walking down the streets and feel good? By the way, this is a problem in every city in America. So this is not a Peoria issue. I just came from Nashville, and I was going, well, this is the same thing that we've been talking about. As far as the venue, because we have a little more control over that, some of the things that we just implemented were based on that. You know, we were hearing from folks that, I don't want just a hot dog. Can you do something else? So we have the only slippery pig barbecue in the entire state in our venue. So if you want to come for barbecue, yes, we love the name, you can come to there. We also have now Mexican options at our events. We, the Grab and Goes. So we want to make folks feel like I can come to an event, have a good time. I think the cleanliness of bathrooms. So we know that in studies done in the entertainment industry, that most of our female guests will judge a venue based on the restroom. To be honest, our restrooms were atrocious. I'm not going to, but there was nothing we could do. It was 20 years of lack of repair. We've now changed out the floors, we've cleaned things up. I won't say it's a delight, but it's a more comfortable experience to go into those restrooms. So we take all of those things seriously, but I think number one on anyone is we want to provide a safe environment for our guests. Because if you feel safe, you keep coming back. Simple as that. I hope I, it's a big question. We could sit over lunch and talk for two hours, but my, that's the shortest answer I think I can give you.
No, no, thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. And again, we just want to ensure that, you know, as you all are evolving, and we're thinking about how do we support you and make downtown inviting and making sure everyone feels welcome and included and safe, that we are implementing our strategies. So I appreciate that feedback, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. We have on the floor a motion to approve. That's been seconded. And if there's no more discussion, I would ask you to cast your votes, please. Motion approved unanimously with distinction.
Fair enough. Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome.
And come to a show.
24-301 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to approve the estimate of taxes to be levied in the amount of $32,299,015 at a rate of 1.3590 pursuant to 35 ILCS 200/18-60.
Mr. Manager?
Hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the city and the library's estimate of property tax levy for 2024 payable in 2025. The assessed values are growing by 7.3%. And as we looked at that, what we wanted to do, knowing that we have our largest fiscal challenges, making our pension payments, particularly in the police and fire pension funds, we wanted to make sure that we were capturing that levy growth and putting that towards our public safety pensions. If we don't do that, that money then has to come out of the general fund, out of other revenue sources, which would mean a higher general fund transfer to going back towards our pensions. So it's just taking money out of what we have in fund balance to do that. So from the proposed recommendation that we have for you, the city's overall property tax rate remains the same at 1.1068. The library's rate goes from 0.4483 to 0.4482. So the total levy decreases from 1.551 to 1.550. Now, for truth and taxation purposes, we have to take out the levies that we have for bonds. So from the city's perspective, we levy $2 million in property taxes. That's paying debt service. So that gets paid, that'll get approved by council when you adopt the tax abatement ordinances for those bonds at the end of November, when we start that approval process. So calculating the levy, you take that out, and you take the library bonds out. So that's why the overall rate is going up. While the aggregate rates are going down, the operating levy dollars are going up. They're going from 1.3517 to 1.3590. That will require a truth and taxation hearing, which we will, we've, I think, will publish the notice and then plan on having that at a future budget meeting that we'll have for you. But the overall operating levy is going up then 7.88% with the overall levy going up 7.3%, which is basically the growth in assessed valuation. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
And again, this is just an estimate. This, for council's sake, this is an estimate of levy. You're not acting on approving the levy. That comes at the end of the budget process.
Got it. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. One question from the sheet here. Is the library taking out additional bonds? Are we paying more down with debt service?
I think that's the, the way that the debt service schedule is laid out, it was just a higher contribution in this year for the debt service that was being paid. So.
Do you know offhand how many more years we have on library bonds and what the balance is?
They get paid off in 2027. The total amount, I will have to look into, but they are paid off in 2027.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the estimated tax levy.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I, is my hearing right, even though I have these devices, that we have an increase in our operational rate? I'm not quite understanding. Perhaps you said it. Why? What is it about that? Even though we have an increase in our assessed value.
Correct.
There's also an increase in our operational rate.
So, so what's happening? The total levies are going down, you know, slightly. They're going down. But there's more money that's going into the library bonds. We're still levying the same amount, the $2 million we're levying in the operating or for the city's bonds, the $2 million we're levying. That's staying the same. But because the assessed value is going up, that rate is going to go down.
Yes.
But we're putting more money towards the growth in assessed value. We're putting more of that towards our pension contributions. FICA, IMRF slightly, and then the larger share of that, 1.6 of our $1.8 million increase, is going towards the police and fire pensions. And so when you look, when you adjust it, when you have growing EAV, and you're seeing less being lev, or more being levied on the bond side, there's also going to be an increase on the operating levy side. Just the numbers of it all. If you look at the chart. If you look at the chart, that's the way that it just calculates out, so. But in the aggregate, the rate is going down.
The rate is going down?
The rate is going down.
I thought the rate was being...
The operating, if you take out bonds, that rate is going up. But ultimately, when you put the bonds back in, when you average it all out, it's going down. So we looked at it in the aggregate when we were looking at setting this because of the needs that we have in funding pensions.
I thought you said it was one three five, one point three five one seven.
That was, that was the, for truth and taxation purposes, when you take out the bonds, that was the rate last year. And the rate this year, when you take out the bonds, is one point three five nine zero.
Thirty-two million dollars is the total levy?
Thirty-six million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars is the total levy.
Yes.
The levy, when you take out the bonds, for truth and taxation purposes, which is the calculation of the levies without bonds, because that's how the General Assembly has told us we have to calculate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Brigham Bach? Did you have something? Okay, sorry. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three zero two is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to hold a discussion on the 2025 revised budget. And on your desk, there is a handout of the slide presentation.
Okay, everybody's had these books for a whole week.
Yes.
And I know I haven't made it through the entire book, but we have time, so if you haven't went through every item, don't feel bad. It's a lot to go through and study, so just keep going. Mr. Manager?
So, so thank you. So this is at the point where we'll give you the, a quick high-level overview and then jump right into your questions you may have or any requests for additional report backs and we can, we can do that as well. This is a revised budget, so the, so the presentation in the budget book itself talks about this as the 2025 revised budget. Because you recall, last year we adopted a biennial budget that included the spending plan for 2024 and for 2025. So we're making those revisions here in the book for you. What we tried to do as staff and what we've been working very hard on with this is to, is to make sure that this budget aligns with your strategic plan. You know, there are the six strategic priorities that the council has laid out, from infrastructure, quality of life, business growth and prosperity, downtown development, embracing diversity, equity and inclusion, and community safety. This budget is tried, we have tried to align with that spending that, or with that direction that council gave as part of the strategic planning process. So in a quick, you know, one page of what your strategic plan is, you can see the vision is our, or the Peoria's mission is, or vision is to provide excellent services, protection, and infrastructure that fosters a high quality of life, and that our mission is Peoria is a thriving all-American city, rich in history and natural beauty with an abundance of opportunities for everyone. We have the values of collaboration, dignity and respect, stewardship and accountability, informed decision-making and public service. And then obviously the six key strategic priorities that we just talked about at the last slide. So as we went through the budget process, we worked with each of the individual departments and we worked with their staff that were, that had the responsibility of completing their departmental plans, and we wanted them to align their spending plans and with the strategic plan as well. So as you get into the departmental budgets in the back part of the book, you'll see where there are goals from the departmental standpoint that align with the, with the six strategic priorities that we have. So you'll see that we have five department goals towards quality of life, eight towards infrastructure, one towards downtown development, seventeen towards community safety, six towards business growth and prosperity, and six towards embracing diversity, equity and inclusion. This is not taking away the council's priorities that were laid out in the plan, this is in addition to. This is, this is where the departments are adding into this, saying, here's how we're going to be moving our operational plans towards helping the council to achieve the strategic plan's goals. So with that, I'm just going to jump back real quick into a snapshot of the economy and then I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director and Mr. Craddy's going to walk through the numbers for you. You know, again, we're seeing that real GDP across the country has grown three percent in the second quarter of 2024. That's up from one point six percent in the first quarter of 2024, really continuing to be driven by consumer spending, investments in business inventories and business investment is what's been driving that growth. We're also seeing that interest rate cuts are going to support job creation, but should lower GDP in 2025, and that we're seeing that the Federal Reserve is getting inflation back in check. So as we're moving through that, from an unemployment standpoint, we've seen that the national unemployment in the state is lowest, the state unemployment is lower than the city's unemployment rate. We're currently at six point four percent, which is down from six point eight percent a year ago, so we're still moving in the right direction as well. So with that, I'm going to turn over the rest of the presentation to our Finance Director to walk through kind of our budget summary.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just kind of if I go through the slides, I'll try to kind of explain what we're looking at. In terms of this first slide, this is really looking at the city in totality. So this is looking at all of our funds rolled into one, really what the spending plan looks like. In terms of revenues, we're looking at revenues of about two hundred and seventy-five million. That is driven heavily by the increase in assessed values on the property tax side. We are still seeing some strength in some of our state sources, primarily state income taxes. We're still seeing some, some strength in those areas, as well as the, the plan to issue about fourteen million dollars in low-interest loans through the IPA for our CSO obligations. In terms of operations, we're looking at expenditures a little bit over two hundred million. Some of the driving factors in the increases we're seeing are our higher benefit costs, specifically in areas like health insurance, as well as the increase in our pension costs, which this year, the public safety pension cost for the city is going up two point nine million. On the capital side, we have capital spending of about sixty-five point seven million. This includes CSO year four, also has the continued grant funds rose and some drainage projects. And as we get into the presentation, we'll get into more of the specific projects that are included in the plan. In terms of debt, we have debt obligations of twenty-one point eight million dollars. That is down about thirteen percent year over year. With some of the strong financial performances the city has seen, last year council approved the early payoff of a loan that we had with the county for the Willow Knowles intersection. And we also retiring some additional debt that we did for kind of some of our lighting projects in town, so we're going to be retiring that. So we see the debt number peak at around twenty-five million in the 2024 budget, and then we see it starts to smooth out towards twenty-one million next year. And as we kind of have talked about earlier, as we have some of the debt for the library expire in 2027, 2028 is when we start seeing some of the debt that we have for the Civic Center expire. So currently, we're on the trajectory that we'll see this number continue to drop, subject to, you know, any other future debt issuances. In terms of just some of the highlights, really looking at the 2024 performance, really looking in totality at the entire budget, we are looking for revenues to slightly be behind budget. That is driven primarily from really just a timing of when we complete federal and state grant projects. So we don't obviously count all the grant money until we have finished projects and the money is received. So when we put together the budget last year, we had about fifty million dollars in different grant opportunities. We obviously have not gotten through all of those, so because of that, we're slightly below our, where we believed for the budget would be last year. We have seen some of our smaller revenues outperform, which has helped keep especially areas like our general fund in a good financial position. That includes interest income. We anticipate about four million dollars in interest income this year in the general fund, which is up from about, it's kind of on par with where it has been. But really during the pandemic, we were looking at maybe half a million dollars in interest, so that number is really helping kind of infuse some additional dollars into the general fund. On fines and forfeitures, we have had, really worked on our enforcement actions when it comes to a lot of our fines and forfeitures, so we're seeing those revenues come in. And then HRA taxes is, the Civic Center just talked about, we have seen strong growth in our HRA taxes, our hotel, restaurant, amusement taxes, that is really helping our general fund look strong this year. Expenses are on track to be slightly above budget due to capital timing. So really, we have capital projects that have been funded in previous years. We may spend some of those dollars in 2024, and because of that, we're slightly ahead, but those are projects that we have anticipated in terms of where really our fund balances sit. And then as I mentioned earlier, we have some early repayment of debt. I think it's always good when we have those opportunities to retire our debt early and save some of those interest costs, so that is included in kind of the 24 highlights. Just looking at some of the general revenue sources that we have in '24 and where we anticipate them to end, on the real estate, real estate transfer side, we're up about five point six percent. Home rule sales tax, we're about one point three. On the hotel tax, going back to the HRA conversation, we're anticipating to be up about twelve point one percent. With restaurant taxes, we're looking at seven point two. We're looking at really being flat with our sewer and stormwater fees, mostly because there was not rate increases for those different areas last year. On licenses and permits, we're up about four point six percent. On the state sales tax, we're about two. State income tax, we're up about one. The one area that is lagging, and I know we've had numerous conversations about this around the horseshoe, is really looking at that corporate income tax or that PPRT component due to the clawbacks that the state has been undergoing over the last few years. We anticipate ending the year somewhere around twelve and a half million dollars in terms of PPRT. That is down from really our peak in 2022 of twenty-eight million. So really, we've seen these clawbacks come into play, and we saw it again this year with about a seventeen percent decline in that revenue source. In terms of kind of 2024 projected estimates versus where the 2025 revised budget sits, so the budget in front of you tonight for your consideration, we have an increase of four point eight percent in real estate transfer, about two percent increase in home rule sales tax. We still have some strong growth in both hotel and restaurant taxes. They're not growing at the same level that they were in the previous year. Stormwater and sewer fees up about one percent, which is driven by sewer rate increases that we've discussed before at the council level. Licenses and permits are down about one and a half percent. State sales tax, we're anticipating to be down about three percent. Income tax, we have up three point one. And on the corporate income tax, we have it in the budget at really about a decline of seven point three. I would say looking at really the budget as it's presented to you, that is probably the biggest unknown that we have. The estimates from the state really only run through state fiscal year '25, which ends about halfway through our fiscal year. And there is not necessarily clear guidance on what the '26 state fiscal year will look like with PPRT. So we really try to estimate it based off of where the '25 fiscal year is, which is about that seven percent decrease, down to about eleven and a half million dollars for PPRT. I am not going to go through all of these line by line. It is included for you. I do obviously want to mention too, this used to be with the thousands on it, we tried to correct that because that was a comment from council last year, so we provided these and the whole numbers. Just to kind of explain how to read this chart is, we really look at '24 projected versus the original '25 adopted. So as the manager laid out, this is a biennial budget. So this is that original budget that we laid out to council in the, last year during the budget process, and that percentage change from adopted to projected, and then we have what is in front of you as revised, and then that change from the revised budget compared to the adopted. And so, you know, really, what you're seeing is we see revenues up about two hundred thousand dollars versus the budget that was presented to council last year. And really, you know, where we're seeing some of that growth was, we had lower assumptions on where assessed values were going to end this last year for this budget process, so that's one of the larger drivers in this, as well as stronger growth, continued growth in that HRA tax area, is really where we're seeing that a little bit additional revenue that we're anticipating as part of the '25 revised. In terms of, you know, two of our main revenue sources, as the manager said with, with the levy request, we have an increase of seven point three percent in terms of assessed values, but no rate change, actually a slight rate decrease to the taxpayer. And in terms of the stormwater fee, we are recommending to do an additional year where we suspend the CPI increase. Just to remind council, the ordinance as laid out has the stormwater fees automatically going up by CPI. We have been suspending that dating back to 2021, really because of the, the reserve levels that we've had in the fund. So we are recommending to continue to do that suspension. I do think with the spending plan in front of you, we more than likely will have to talk about looking at taking that CPI increase in '26 and beyond, but we're still recommending to keep it flat in 2025. In terms of kind of state, federal and other sources, this chart reads the exact same way. Really, we're seeing about an additional nine million dollars year over year versus the '25 adopted to '25 revised. Really, I would say one of the larger drivers here is staff continues to do a great job of getting all the grant dollars we can for different things, whether it's the police department, fire department, community development. They're continuing to make strides in getting those grant dollars because when we put together the '25 budget, we didn't want to put on paper assumptions that we weren't sure of. The number's out in front of you is what we're sure of, and there's about additional six million dollars in grant funds in this budget compared to what we had originally put out last year. In terms of expenses, expenses are up about three million dollars year, budget to budget in terms of that comparison. Really where you will see your largest dollar amount increases is really on that employee benefits column, which is what I had mentioned earlier, really looking at our healthcare costs being up about a million and a half dollars year over year, as well as our contribution to police and fire pension funds being up about two point nine. So that's really what that main cost driver is in comparison to what we had assumed year over year in that '25 budget, that's really where that, that growth is coming from. In terms of staffing, really a couple items from the 2024 staffing that had been before you during that budget process, we did add two additional positions mid-year, one for police and one for fire, based off some of their operational needs, so that number, that increased the allocation by two. In terms of the 2025 staffing number, there is an increase, a headcount of fourteen, that increases the staffing to seven hundred and six people, up from two point three percent, as well as we continue to try to fill the vacancies that we have. We'll get into the next slide with the staffing, that while there is an increase of headcount of fourteen, the cost doesn't really reflect that, it's really kind of a transfer of type of positions for some of the staff. So with that, with that being said, Public Works is requesting to convert thirteen maintenance workers, split between general operations as well as our stormwater utility fund, converting those, in essence, temporary workers to full-time equivalents. When staff look through the numbers, in essence, the net cost to make that change, to get additional hours of time, is about five thousand dollars per person. So we felt that that was a rational decision to get four more months of work out of the staff. So that is where the recommendation comes from, to make that change from the temp, the temp worker to a full-time, a full-time equivalency. And then on the stormwater side, there is a recommendation to add a full-time stormwater manager. As Director Powers came before council last year, they were looking at ways to, to start working more operationally on some of our stormwater utility with, with city staff. And so part of this request with the, the full-time conversions also is to do additional work on kind of the stormwater utility, and because of that kind of additional work, they need a manager to help oversee kind of the day-to-day operations of, of those staff. In terms of the ARPA dollars, so just as a reminder for council... In terms of the ARPA dollars, so, um, just as a reminder for council, the city's requirement under ARPA is to spend or obligate all funds by the end of this fiscal year. The definition of obligation per the treasury is really, we have to be under contract for services, work, whatever, whatever that may be by December 31st, uh, 2024. When staff was putting the budget together, we wanted to do an analysis, obviously one to make sure we're going to spend every dollar that we were given by the treasury and make sure we met the requirements of the act. And so far, really with where we are landing this year, we anticipate that about 40.7 or 40.8 million dollars of the original spending plan that council had brought forward, or that we had brought forward to council will be spent on the purposes listed above. So a little bit over 10.10.3 million dollars for lost revenue, 15.1 million for infrastructure, 6 million going in the neighborhoods, 4.8 into economic development, 3.4 million into violence reduction, and about a million dollars for administrative costs to help us run these programs. And so when staff did this exercise, what we wanted to ensure was and do a review of is what costs has a city already incurred? That would be ARPA eligible, that we could in essence tell the treasury, we have spent the dollars that you've given us, and we can reprogram those dollars to meet some of the existing programs that we already have laid out before the council, but may not meet those obligation requirements? Or to look at other projects that we may have, um, to go through. And really that's something, so we have about 6.3 million dollars that we would need to obligate and reprogram. So what staff is recommending is to, uh, use about 5.6 million dollars in technology improvements that the city has made. This is primarily focused on, uh, radio infrastructure for our police, fire, public works. It's really about some of those technological pieces that is, are making us more accessible to the community and making sure that, you know, especially public safety has the resources they need to meet the demands, uh, coming out of the pandemic. The other, uh, 652,000, um, was associated with the emergency demolition of the Saratoga church that occurred last year. Is taking ARPA dollars and using that towards that emergency demolition. So that would get us to the obligation requirements that we would need to meet with the treasury to close the book on our ARPA dollars at a little bit over 47 million, about 47.1 million dollars. In terms of the reprogramming of those dollars, and it's on page 47 of your book, if you wanted to go to it. What staff is recommending is to, in essence, use about 2.8 million dollars of that 6.3 towards existing programs that, like I said, may not meet that obligation requirement, but we want to continue to run it. Things like, uh, demolition program, having money set aside for, for demolitions and emergency demolitions is included in this. We have included, uh, the neighborhood mini-grant program, which has been very, uh, as the director duo would always say, they, they don't really ever have enough money to give out for that program. So continuing some of those programs, um, really with those dollars and being able to do them outside of the confines of really the, of the act itself, but still being able to provide those services to the community. We also have about $942,000 set aside to really work for homelessness funding, what that may be. I think we'll take direction from, from council on what those dollars may be. But having some money set aside for, for homeless funding. Uh, the other three main uses are really existing capital projects or capital items, um, that we would be able to balance our capital needs with in 2025. If we don't do this, we'll have to go back to the drawing board with some of our capital projects. Primarily because we just don't necessarily have the funds without issuing debt for them. Those include, uh, the Evan Street sidewalk to Constitution Park, which was a project that Councilman Riegenbach had brought forward last year. So it would just be reprogramming those dollars to, to, towards that purpose. We have about $500,000 in fire fleet that's really, um, expanding and extending the useful life of some of our apparatus. So that we aren't in a position to have to go out and buy new equipment to extend the life. And then really fleet capitalization for both public works and, and the police department to let us kind of continue to modernize our fleet. And so that's really the kind of, uh, you know, plan that we have associated with the ARPA dollars, as I said. Really our goal with this was to meet the requirements of the act. Make sure we have spent every penny that we were given by the treasury as part of the act. And make sure we don't have to give any of those dollars back. In terms of just grants in general that are included in this budget. And some of these projects are already in the works. So things like the MacArthur corridor, as well as the Adams and Jefferson one-way, two-way. These are really the associated grant dollars that we're including in the budget for those. Those overall budgets are much larger than those numbers, um, just like Wisconsin. But those are the additional grant dollars we have this year for those projects. In terms of operational grants, the police department continues to do well. We anticipate using about 4.95 million dollars, um, and operating grants for both co-response and the vehicle task force, as well as other grants that the police department has got. We do have 1.42 million dollars, um, for the last year of our federal funding under the safer grant. And just to remind council, um, as part of that grant, we have to maintain the staffing levels for an additional year post-grant. So we'll have that discussion really as part of the 26 budget, but this is the last year, um, of the federal funds for that grant. In terms of our C D B G and home grants, um, we are anticipating pretty much a flat, uh, budget from the federal government on these. So about $2 million in C D B G, about 665,000 in home, and about another 165,000 E S G funds. One area that we kind of always like to talk about is really that support to, to other agencies. Really looking at what the plan is included in this budget for next year. We have $542,000 for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have 1.2 million dollars for the civic center. That's based off the current agreement we have with them for, in essence, guaranteeing 1.2 million dollars in H R A funding to them. $100,000 for arts partners, another 100,000 for the downtown development corporation, 75,000 for the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, and 282,875 dollars for the Peoria County Animal Control Services, and then another 250,000 for the Springdale Cemetery. In terms of the community investment plan, so the, the C I P, which is in the back of your book. The total spend for next year is 65.8 million dollars. We are happy to report that 88.5% of that is looking at both, working is going towards road sewers and sidewalks and traffic, which also means about 88 and a half percent of that capital plan is directly impacting the citizens of Peoria. And 11 and a half percent of it goes towards tools, technology and facilities that do assist and, and help the citizens of Peoria, but don't, aren't directly impacting, um, them on a daily basis. This is a kind of an overview slide of the 25 through 29 community investment plan. So we have 65 million this year, uh, 56 million in 26, 81 million in 27, 77 million in 28, and then going down to 27 and a half million in 29. Really, when we look at the plan, we do lay out a five-year plan. But really this gets re-analyzed again as part of the 26 budget. So really that 26 and beyond can move based off the funding needs that the city has at that point. Just kind of going through some of the major projects included in, in the, in the community investment plan. So we have 9.5 million dollars for the combined sewer overflow reduction year project two, or the C S O projects. Uh, we have 6.6 million dollars from MacArthur Highway from Jefferson Street to the bridge. Another 5.3 million for Moss Avenue from Western Avenue to Sheridan Road. About 4.2 million for the Adams and Jefferson, uh, one-way, two-way conversion. 2.9 million in, in combined sewer overflow reduction years five through seven, kind of that pre-planning for those years. 2.3 million for the Wisconsin Avenue from Leclerc to Nebraska. We have $2 million total in fleet recapitalization. We have $2 million in stormwater fleet recapitalization. 1.7 million, uh, in drainage, drainage repair program. So that's drainage repair across the city. We have 1.38 million for Nebraska reconstruction, I-74 to Sterling. About 1.3 million in drainage improvements for, uh, those streets. About another 1.2 million from Galena Road Industrial Park redevelopment. Another 1.25 for the green infrastructure maintenance and C S O areas. Uh, we have 1.25 million dollars for the parking deck at 813 and 907 Southwest Washington. We have 1.1 million for the drainage improvement shared in a road between Northmore and Knoxville. We have a little bit over a million dollars for the asset management software for really the public works department in the city. We have $965,000 for our outfall improvements. Uh, we have 900,000 for the demolition and lock clearing and, and clearance, just as we talked about with some of those reprogramming of ARPA funds. Uh, we have 800,000 for the Evan Street sidewalk to Constitution Park. Another 800,000 for sidewalks, asset condition and transition plan update. We have 800,000 for the storm sewer inspection and cleaning. 790,000 for the combined sewer overflow monitoring. 750,000 for consent decree combined sewer overflow reduction. 650,000 for the storm, storm sewer lining and repairs. 600,000 for combined sewer overflow reduction year, year three projects. So those are the projects that got started last year. An additional funding request for those projects. Half a million dollars for fire fleet replacement, another half million for non-artificial roads payment preservation, uh, implementation. In terms of debt, as I mentioned earlier, this, this budget includes a debt decrease of about 3.3 million dollars. Really this is from the retirement, some of our existing debt, as well as paying off some of our other debt. And there is no new bonds, bond issues planned for 2025. We do have a low interest loan program through the I E P A for the C S O work, but that's at a low interest rate of around 1.75%. In terms of fund balance, uh, currently the projected unassigned fund, fund balance in the general fund at the end of 2025 will be 31.78 million dollars or 38.9% of operating expenses. So we continue to stay, um, above our 25% council policy when it comes to our general fund. We do continue to maintain that due to the anticipated growth in pension obligations, that any excess fund balance we have above that 25% threshold will be assigned for future pension payments. And really the budget that's laid out to you tonight, um, we have about a 2.6 million dollar deficit in the general fund. And we're keeping kind of that promise to you, looking at bringing you a budget that really only has a deficit equal to that increase in police and fire pension contributions. And using those excess reserves to pay for those obligations without affecting day-to-day operations. Overall use of fund balance in 2025 is 13.1 million. That's a reduction of our overall fund balance of about 4.6 million. That goes across all of our funds. So like I said, we had 2.5 million, about 2.6 million dollars on our general fund. But we also are spending down our reserves, especially in our stormwater utility fund to bring that closer to really that 25% fund balance target. And really using those funds as, as were anticipated, um, for, for the utility. Just the last few slides really kind of look at the future. Obviously we're looking at a spending plan for 25, but when we're looking at our spending plans for 25, we want to be cognizant of what those plans may look like years beyond. Obviously, things can change, new revenue sources can come in, new expenses can come in. But this is obviously based off of what we know currently. So looking at kind of our general fund, one of the things that we like to look at is really as our public safety pension costs continue to grow, what percent of our overall general fund is our contribution requirements that we have to, that we have to do to our funding obligations to be fully funded by 2040? And so, you know, in your budget book, if you, if you go to page, uh, 51, we have a couple of pages of discussion in terms of what that cost looks like. And what we are seeing is that really we fund our pensions with three primary funding sources. Those being property taxes, which we talked about tonight with the levy. We have personal property replacement tax, which we've talked about, has been declining year over year. The other third source is really, we are transferring money out of our general fund to make up the difference. And so there's a chart on page 51 of the budget book that really lays out how those percentages of the overall cost is changing year over year. And really short of any substantial changes on either property taxes or the P P R T side, we're going to continue to see that general fund transfer number increase over the coming years. So this chart really is just looking at what we anticipate our contributions to be over the next few years. So you can see we're at 36.2 million here in 2025. Based off of kind of the actuaries assumptions, we're looking at a contribution of about 42.3 million in 2029. And really what I wanted to kind of reflect here is what you're seeing is as that number is going up, the percentage that is of our overall general fund is increasing without some additional revenue to offset some of that growth. And so we're going to continue to see that pressure on general fund dollars as we continue to see, uh, our contributions go up, as long as we continue to seek really lack of action at the state level in terms of any substantive and changes to, uh, kind of the art, how the funding requirements are for the city associated with pensions. We're going to continue to see that number go up beyond 29, obviously all the way up until 2040, where we would have to be at the 90% funded amounts. In terms of the budget outlook, I, I wanted to kind of, you know, discuss this. The blue line you see is really our sources. This is really our revenues into our general fund. The red line is our uses. Obviously I can say as a finance director, usually I like it if the blue line is above the red line. That means we have more revenues than our expenses. But our trend over the next few years is really that we are seeing our uses be higher than our sources. And a lot of that is driven by, like I said, that increase in our public safety pension costs. And it's why we have been diligent about keeping the reserves where, where they are. So that we have those resources available to us to offset this, um, as those costs continue to go up. In terms of the general fund fund balance, so this looks at really where our balance sits now and where our policy says we should be at each year. So that the blue line is really where our, or our fund balance will be based off of, um, the five-year projection that's on page 53 in the budget book. And then the red line is really 25% of our expenses in each of those years based off of that model. So what you can see is around 2028 is the red line starts to surpass the blue line. So what that means is we now are going, based off the current plan as it's laid out, we would start to fall below those reserve policies, below that 25%. Where council would have to take some action associated with it. I don't think for any of you, this is a surprise. I think as we've been talking to you about this over the last really three years of, or four years now of me presenting this budget, that this was still going to be the trajectory really because of that growth in our public safety pension costs. Just really quickly on the last slide, just kind of to remind council. Tonight, we are at, uh, the 15th where we had the discussion on the budget. We anticipate having a budget hearing as well as continued discussion on, at the meeting on the 22nd. We are planning on having another budget discussion on the 29th, as well as the truth and taxation hearing will be on the 29th. We are hopeful in conversations with, with you to finalize the budget at the meeting on the 5th. So that we can bring you all of the different areas that we need to bring you to adopt the budget and the levy at the meeting on, on the 12th of November. And with that being said, that was the presentation we have for you, or obviously we'll entertain any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Again, as he indicated, tonight, the expectation is that we would receive this review of the proposed 2025 budget and answer, excuse me, ask any questions, uh, that you may have, ask for any report backs that you may have, and then, uh, go into discussion at our, our next budget meeting. So I'm going to start off, kick it off with a few questions, then I'm going to, uh, turn it over to you, uh, Councilman Euler, and then we'll begin to go around the horseshoe. Just a few questions, Director Craddy. The debt that you talked about, um, that's beginning to decline, is all of that bonded debt? Are there, is there other debt beyond the bonded debt?
So the, the two items that are falling off due to early repayment. one was a loan from the county and another was a direct placement, really loan with a local bank, I N B Bank. The remaining amount is as we are paying off some of our principal on our existing debt. We are seeing our requirements drop as well, but really the larger drop is paying off those two existing obligations early and getting them off of our books for the future.
And if you could go back, I think one slide? I want to make sure I understand the difference between our our fund balance policy, which is 25 million. Is that correct?
So it's 25% of the operating expenses that year.
Okay, okay. And then once we make the payments, early payments, additional payments to the pension debt, does that take us back to the 25% or are we still higher than the 25%?
So right now, what this shows is that we have enough reserves above that 25% to make those excess payments through 2028. Beyond 2028, we will not have additional excess reserves to cover that growth. So the future councils will have to look to how to address that shortfall in our budget at that point.
Would we be paying everything above that 25% that difference to the pension?
That is currently how, you know, we have assigned the fund balance within this budget is that really any of those dollars above that 25% threshold is earmarked specifically for those increases. Now, obviously, that is, that is subject to council discussion and any additional council requests the council may have. But that is how we have laid the budget out in front of you tonight.
And I think that we know that that's our largest expense driver is public safety pension costs. We're in a good spot right now with our current fund balances to be able to say that we can cushion that over time. What it's going to mean is that as you look at the transfers out of the general fund over time, those numbers are going to get larger because that money is going to be coming from the general fund. Now, what could mitigate that? As Finance Director Craddy said, if the state does something to extend the amortization period, that could lower that down. If we continue to see that the market is performing well, that could potentially lower the amount of contributions over time. If our assessed value continues to grow, ultimately, and we continue with the path that we've recommended, which is that we put that towards public safety pensions, there could be less that needs to come out of the general fund. But that's the kind of the path that we've been looking at trying to, how do we spend down that fund balance? It's got to go towards pensions is basically the policy recommendation we're making to you.
Sure. And I think it's a smart strategy to do that. But for 2025, what is that amount?
For 2025, the amount we're transferring to pensions?
The total amount that's being transferred to pensions is about $7.5 million. Really, the overall increase we're seeing in the contribution requirements this year is 2.9. So we're really running a deficit in the general fund of about 2.6. So really, we are using $2.6 million of our reserves to offset that cost growth for our public safety pension.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just a few things being this early in the budget process here. Nothing correct to address replacing the grocery tax revenue that we're losing from the state?
No, next year.
What's that?
We're anticipating, we'll talk about that next year. We didn't, we're assuming that the grocery tax stays in place this year because it will. I mean, you know, it's, we have until-
I just mean in terms of looking at these budget projections into future years, are you planning that revenue or taking it out past 2025?
This assumes that the grocery tax revenue remains in. If it's out, that's an additional $4 million reduction in revenues we'd have to see.
So past 25, we still have a $4 million gap roughly to deal with?
One way or the other.
And then also, Director, you mentioned that you're planning to consume that extra pension payment money out of general fund. To the 2029 line, is that consistently just that amount or is there other deficit at some point that comes in?
Really, our focus with that is that that number through 29 is just eating that increase in public safety pension fee because really when we put this budget together, we really looked at keeping this a status quo as we could. So we're building off of a status quo budget that lives within our means. So really, it is that amount of that increase in public safety pension cost.
And then it looks like in 2029, a pretty staggering reduction in capital investment is that, that's essentially the point that you're projecting to where we're, conditions are really going to change and there's going to be a lot less money to work with.
I think that as we looked at some of the projects that we have right now, that we projected out some of the road projects out through that period of time. I think there's some development expenses that we can probably look at, and I think it's probably worth a report back because I think some of those will probably continue because, you know, those are expenses that we're paying out. So I do think that that number, it's a little, it gets hazier the further out you get with capital spending, but I think that that number will likely be higher than what it's showing here in this budget.
And one of them that really stands out to me, not that there aren't a few others that are pretty big changes, but community development goes from a million to zero. And I assume that's the money for demolition projects?
Yeah, and that actually more than likely is just a coding issue where when we put the numbers in, we included those, it probably went more in the public works budget. We can fix that so it's reflected properly, but really the $900,000 needs to be in the community development bucket.
Thank you. That's all for me.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report, Director Craddy. Looking at, and you did a great job of outlining the revenues that we have here in the city of Peoria. For the listening audience though, can you give definitions to the real estate, real estate transfer and in the home rule sales tax revenue stream?
Yeah, so the real estate transfer taxes, when you sell a piece of property, there are taxes assessed on that sale. The county collects those fees and we get a portion of those taxes back to us. So that is really heavily tied. We saw a little bit of pullback in that over the last couple of years as interest rates began to rise. Now that interest rates are starting to decline, there is an assumption that some of the housing market will start to move. So some of those dollars will more than likely come back. In terms of, sorry, I forgot the other part of your question.
Home rule sales?
Home rule sales tax. So home rule sales tax is the 1.75% that we are taxed, that we tax all general sales other than grocery and pharmaceutical and medical. So if you go to Target and buy a shirt that's with the 1.75% that we have home rule sales tax above and beyond what the state is charging you.
Hashtag shop local. And I noticed that you forecasted that the license and permit fees are going to decrease by 1.5%. Is there a particular reason why you forecast that decrease?
Part of that was just, we've seen a little tick up in really what those numbers look like just because of enforcement actions and really just looking at working on our debt collection. So I had some mode of pullback just to kind of get us back to that, that normal level. But also, you know, in some ways, I always hedge a little bit more conservative in terms of kind of business growth or any of the kind of general permits and licensing that we may see. And so trying to bring that more in line with, I think more back to some of the traditional areas, especially since we are starting to see things like consumer savings are starting to decline, so people may not be able to do as much in terms of home, like kind of homework and all of that kind of stuff.
And then just the last two, so I know with the American Rescue Plan funds, it looks like we have a little over $6 million left that still needs to be obligated. So if I was understanding that correctly, you were saying that essentially we were looking to get reimbursed for some projects that we've already been doing? Was that, is that essentially the offense?
Yeah, it's looking at projects that met the requirements of the act, but we had not earmarked towards. And this would be shifting those projects to meet the requirements and then using those funds for the purposes laid out in the budget.
And then lastly, for local sources, always, not always, but I get asked sometimes about, now that we have recreational marijuana dispensaries operating in the city of Peoria, I think there's an interest on, you know, what sales tax we're generating off of that and what benefit that is to the city. When I see the 2025 local sources, where would that be housed at?
So that goes under the, it's currently under just the general sales taxes. We still do not have enough folks in this space in the city for me to be able to break that out separately.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Grant?
Manager, it's nice to see most all of our department heads here. I had the distinct impression that they were banished.
No, they were just sitting in the other room.
Well, you know, it would be nice if we could see them in here. This is my 23rd budget. And a long time ago, when I was sitting on that side, one of our senior councilmen said, there are two critical things that any council does, very critical things. A, hire a city manager. B, create a spending blueprint with the people's money, which hopefully will reflect the values of the community we are sworn to represent. And I would say that every single council, we are making decisions whether we know it or not that will impact the city. And that's why I would like to see our department heads here. Not in another room. If there were a pandemic, if there's somebody on staff who has medical issues, mask, or maybe be excused. But I just, I just think we're past the point where they need to be sequestered. And I know I've talked to many of you about it, and you haven't mentioned it, but I'm going to mention it tonight. I'm going to also mention that we're always happy when the governor comes to Peoria. It's great. It's great. But we need help at the state level. And manager, you have been saying over and over again on this grocery tax. Don't want to talk about it too much now. 25. Can you explain that?
Sure. We have until October of '25 to make a determination on what the council wants to do with the grocery tax. I think I mentioned at our, at the meeting, a couple of meetings ago, I think there's a lot of interest on the part of other communities to try and time that and look at doing something like that mid-year next year after we get through this budget year. And, you know, most of, there are some communities that have budget years that are set up on April 1 fiscal years. That gets us past that and it gets us moving in that direction.
The car is moving down the road at 80 to 90 miles per hour. It's time to address it now. When we had the, I don't want to say it's a grand opening, but kind of like for the grocery store down on Western with Pastor Brown, we had a lone voice in the room, happens to be sitting just a few feet from me, representing our newspaper, saying to the governor, well, heck, you just punched a big hole in the budgets of many municipalities. On top of this perpetual problem, I'm sorry, Mayor, but year after year, it's this pension mess that we have. And we know we're in a mess, not because we've been spending like drunken sailors, but because in bipartisan fashion, the pension lockbox has been entered and money's been removed going back many, many governors. And so that is a huge problem, especially as we look down the road at these horizontal line graphs. Right now, we're kind of flush because of all the money coming out of the pandemic. And, you know, I tell my constituents, hey, we're going to get back to more traditional budgeting. All this government money is going through, and I'm not saying we didn't need it because we needed to keep the economy liquid. People, for example, who worked at the civic center, well, they shut the whole place down. How are they supposed to make a living? Not to mention many, many other occupations. But I just wish we could get more help from Springfield. And that means our governor and our state legislators. Some of them, I think, are really punching way above their weight to help in this regard. But I see trouble ahead. I really do. And I know you and Director Craddy have been warning us with these grim graphs. I feel like they're Malthusian projections. Because eventually, we're going to be there again where we're going to be staring down the barrel of potentiality of cuts in core basic services. Police, fire, public works. So then how do we fund our city? How do we keep it safe and all these things? So I'm really not saying anything that most all of you don't know. But I do want to bring this up to the level of explicit consciousness as we continue our budget deliberations. And I noticed with some, certainly wasn't glee, it was with some horror, that three of the things that are part of our strategic plan, budget alignment, that are apparently important to this council would be our quality of life, our downtown development, and our commitment to safety. Counsel, we have a failing grade now. Listen to the people who live in our community. Listen to the people who live in the neighborhoods. Go talk to the business people who are trying to operate downtown. Go talk to Rick Edgar about people who are reluctant to come down for some events because we have failed to use our existing budget to tackle these problems. Our downtown, and by the way, I think our best days are ahead, but you know what? We've got to put our big boy and girl pants on and go after these problems like there's no tomorrow because our citizens are watching us. They are watching us. And trust me, the people who have invested in this community, and that's people in neighborhoods and our businesses, are hurting badly. I just can't imagine how this community's economy would just take off if we could solve these problems. And they're all resolvable with the will of this council. And I'm quite convinced that if you're not listening to what I'm saying, if you're not seeing the light, which I've already seen, you will feel the heat. It is coming. But, you know, I want to thank you, manager, and the staff for the excellent overview. I think we're off to a good start, and I look forward to our budget discussions and deliberations. We won't have some of those very contentious debates, which we had several years ago, manager, before COVID did its number on our economy. So every bad thing blows in perhaps something good. But we're going to get back to more traditional budgeting. We better be ready for it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, on page 10 of the report, or slide number 10. I am a little confused here. Why would the projection, what is the difference in incidence of the home rule sales tax and state sales tax?
On, the main difference is a home rule sales tax- On, the main difference is home rule sales taxes not include licensed vehicles. We are not allowed to levy taxes on those. And so the assumption here is that some of those larger equipment items, like motor vehicles, we're going to see a little bit of a decline in sales.
The other element, we, we have two revenue streams that are, that are pulled into our state sales tax revenue stream, and that includes the local use tax. And the local use tax is declining considerably. That used to be where online sales were distributed back to local governments, and it's, use taxes are charged, if you do buy a vehicle, for example, in another county in Illinois, there's a use tax that's paid, and then that money comes back. But that's declined, because they've shifted now, after the leveling the playing field act for retail, internet sales are now coming back to us in the other revenue streams. So, so that's pulling it down a little bit larger than the home rule sales tax.
Thank you. Thank you. And just not a necessarily relevant question, but do we still tax the first $500 of a vehicle, of a vehicle purchase in the city, and then exempt the rest in the home rule sales tax? That's how it started.
The, the, the home, the home rule sales tax by, by Illinois law is not charged on titled goods.
Okay.
So, so when you buy a vehicle, you're not paying the home rule sales tax. You're simply paying the state 6.25%.
Okay. Because when, when it was implemented, it was kind of, that was one of the things that was done. Page 25 reminded me, we've got the parking deck at 813-907 Southwest Washington. And do we have anything budgeted for our newly acquired parking deck?
No, we're not anticipating on putting any funds into it. We're anticipating issuing RFP and getting a developer out to do something with it. We will have an assessment back from Farnsworth in the next month, but we're not anticipating at this point in time that we're, we're going to do anything with that as part of this proposed spending plan.
Didn't we set aside money for due diligence on what it's going to take?
$50,000. Again, that was as, so that we can prepare an RFQ for developers, so that they understand what they're getting into, not so that we're going to be the ones necessarily doing that work and investing that money into the building.
You and I will talk about this, Mr. Manager. I guess that's some sort of a threat, but anyway. And I have some other. That was covered by Councilman Allen. Oh, on page 21, am I right that all those items are funded by HRA taxes?
A majority of them are. The areas that are not are the PCAP charges from the county, as well as the cost for the Springdale Cemetery. The rest of those do fall.
The, the Economic Development Council and the Downtown Development Corporation are not funded with HRA tax dollars. HRA tax dollars funds the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Civic Center, and Arts Partners.
That's it?
Yes.
And then the existing debt, the, the HRA dollars, the rest of it goes towards the existing debt.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but okay. All right. Thank you on that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of comments and questions. One, I'd like to acknowledge the, the necessary allocation of funding for the unhoused population. I know we've got a long way to go, but definitely want to acknowledge that, because that's very important and certainly a serious and dire situation in this community. And then I want to know if you could assist me, Director Craddy, in understanding this line item, and I'll just use the fire fleet replacement as an example. So the $500,000 that's allocated, and then that particular line, I have not gotten to in this book to page 277, 8, but it looks like that line item for fire fleet replacement, I'll let you get there. It's like 280, maybe, 78, 9, 280, yeah. It's not labeled 280, but it's after, where it says capital improvements. So midway down, where it says fire fleet replacement, would you walk me through that, a whole line, like the 14 million for past, and like what each one of those, and how we came to those numbers?
Yeah. So if you're, this is, this is page 51 of the CIP sheets for everyone else. So the past number, the 14,172,000, that looks at really, really sense the life of when we started using the software that we use, which is called Sondi, how much we have put into the fire fleet. So that can be replacement of apparatus, it can be repair of apparatus, and so on and so forth. You look at the 25 number, that is the request of the fire chief this year, really looking at doing maintenance work on some of our existing fleet to extend those useful life. Then there is a request of 2.8 million in 2026. That's actually an item that's come before council, I believe, earlier this year. The length of time to actually get in line to get a fire truck is about 18 to 24 months if we're lucky. So we've been having to kind of get in line early for some of these. So these are, that's really our replacement of vehicles in 2026. If you look in the description part of the, of that sheet, it does lay out specifically which type of apparatus are going to be replaced, really kind of going forward from 25 through 28.
Where would the description part be, sir?
Are you looking at this sheet?
No, I'm looking at.
So that sheet is really just kind of your table of contents.
Okay.
So if you actually go to page 51 of the CIP sheet, so about 51 more pages in, that gives you the breakdown of each of those projects, or each of those areas in terms of what's being spent or bought in those areas.
Okay. And so the years where there's zero, so for example, 2027, that, there's no request there, or there hasn't been one yet?
There has not been one yet. How we have structured these in the past is we usually have looked at doing bond issuances every other year for things like facility improvements in bondable capital, which really fire trucks are one of our few bondable vehicles that we have, because it has useful lives over 20 years. So really, the, the fire department has looked at doing that, really that two-year replacement cycle with their vehicles. So that's why you see the gaps.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to, if I could get some report back, Director Craddy, one as it relates to public safety. The council had allocated funds for, some of the ARPA funds, if I'm not mistaken, as part of the environmental design. I was just kind of trying to figure out how much we spent on that. That was one area. The other one had to do with infrastructure. We had been working, I think, a little bit with Western Avenue Greenway Project to help with some of their stormwater issues, if we could get a report back on that. And the last one dealt with a quality of life as it relates to food insecurities, specifically Peoria grown. Had we, I know there had been conversations, but I'm not sure if we were able to advance any efforts with regards to that. If we could get a report back, Mr. Manager, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Velpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Craddy, for the presentation, and thank you for meeting up with me and educating me on the budgetary issues. Okay. So I'll start with the question on page number nine on your presentation. So of all the things that we see here, the most red line item or most, most highlighted item is the 17% loss of corporate income. I know there's a loss, but do you know what factors contributed to that 17% reduction? And I just wanted to know how the, this shortfall will impact cities' ability to fund essential services.
Absolutely.
And the follow-up question is, it's already, so the loss is already reported. So what are your next steps? Do we have any plan for that?
So I think in a, in a way, we have kind of seen this pullback of personal property placement tax coming, because the levels that the city had been receiving, really coming out of the pandemic, had been at levels that were very much out of the norm. Usually the city was averaging somewhere in that 10 to 15 million dollar range, based off of the processes the state follows. We had seen numbers around 22 and 28 million, really looking at 22 and 23. The Department of Revenue, actually with some assistance from the only municipal league, reviewed the calculation of how they allocate personal property placement tax versus what gets allocated towards income tax, in a very convoluted formula from, from the 1970s. And it came to find out that they had over allocated the amounts directed towards municipalities, schools, counties, other jurisdictions, associated with personal property placement tax. And so we had kind of seen this coming. This was actually a revenue source that we had been intentional about trying to help offset some of our police and fire, police and fire pension contribution increases, because we kind of looked at this as a one-time revenue. We, we knew the levels were higher than we thought they would be, and they would come back down more to the level that we're seeing them. We are seeing numbers, really this year, at about 12 and a half million. Next year, we're assuming about 11 and a half million. There are some numbers in there that are probably lower than where we will stabilize, once the clawbacks end from the state. Because not only have they fixed the formula, they're also pulling back the over, the over amount, the additional revenue that they provided to us in the past years. When exactly that's going to end, I can't necessarily tell you yet. I think there was some belief that it would end with state fiscal year '26. It's unknown at this point, because they're about two to three years behind on their review of the calculations. So there's always the possibility that they find that there's additional clawbacks needed. The concern from the city's perspective was really what, you know, I kind of had honed in on, on the public safety pension side. This was one of our, this is one of our revenue sources for our contributions. Like I said, we had used it to offset some of that growth. With this pullback, it's harder for us to absorb that growth without additional transfers from the general fund, and that's why you're seeing in this budget that increase in the general fund contribution towards our pension obligations.
Thank you. I have a question on, not a question, I have a request on page number 17. So maybe I, I did not hear properly when you said it, or maybe it is right. So when you were saying that there is six point, close to 6.2 million dollars on obligated funds, when you presented, I thought I heard that something to do with technology. But then when I go back to page number 47, it doesn't reflect any technology. It's like fleet recapitalization or fire fleet. So where does this change coming?
So we have 6.3 million left in American Rescue Plan funds. We're going to apply, we're recommending to you that we apply that towards expenses we've already incurred in technology, which is our public safety radio system, some other technology improvements we've made, the church on Saratoga, Saratoga, excuse me, that collapsed and the demolition costs that we had for that. That in essence then frees up those dollars going into 2025. We're going to extend 2 point, I'm sorry, spend 2.9 million dollars of continuing the ARPA spending on demolitions, continuing the spending on some of the economic development work that we had, continue to, some of the spending on some of the lock clearance work that Councilwoman Jackson mentioned. And then that leaves us with roughly about 2 point, or 3.4 million dollars that's left to be spent. Of that 3.4, we're recommending that 2.5 of that go towards our existing capital in the three projects being Evan Street, fleet replacement, and fire fleet, just to be clean with it. And then the remaining 900,000, 942,000, that we would set that aside to address the homelessness issues that we have in the community that we're facing, working with the, the agencies in the community to find additional shelter capacity and look at additional permit supportive housing, to, in essence, address the issues that we know that we've been facing here in the community.
Thank you. Now I have a two-pronged question. So basically, it kind of aligns to one another. So we always say all is well. That's how I've been on this council. This is my fourth year. We always say all is well, but all is not well with ARPA dollars closing, closing out. And I also saw this current slide, which is, which is, which looks like we will have to make some tough decisions going forward. So what do you think, or probably I should not say what do you think, what are your thoughts on improving the city's financial plans, if not increase the, increase the, any other source of revenue that offsets this? So while looking at it, the second prong question is, I looked at the home rules tax. That's the most understood tax that generates revenue, because it's, you're getting 1.75% of anything that you buy. So the, the follow-up question I have is, what kind of business, I think they should go to the economic development team, what kind of, you know, platforms are we, are we looking at to attract more businesses? Because I think that is one way, having more businesses come to Peoria would increase more home rule sales, sales tax. So what kind of platforms are we having for a common man to, or a, or a business person to consider Peoria as the next destination? Because that, I think, we are, we are only thinking of spending, or wisely spending a hundred dollar bill, but we don't know how to invest into it. We need to invest, and we need to see how do we kind of offset, we know in, in two years, whoever is in the council, I may not be there, but in two years, the, the situation comes to a point where we have to curtail essential services, looking at the projections now, and it will become even more clear in 2026. So how do we, what are the plans that, what do you think, or please advise the council of what kind of measures we should take from now, so that we can offset at least some part of that burden?
Let us put together a report back, and we can give it, you know, some thought and give you some answers on, on that next week.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. And some of those initiatives are in working with our collaborative partners like Greater Peoria ADC and Distillery Labs and, and those organizations.
Correct.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for skipping out for a few minutes. There's a fundraiser going on for the ROE and the spring celebration, and just so happened, my son was one of the performers, so I had to catch Moses playing Loverboy. So if, if I know these questions are redundant, please. If I, any of these questions are redundant, please stop me, Mr. Manager. I'd like to begin where several of my colleagues have already picked up with the fact that we're nearing the end of the ARPA money and, Mr. Manager, you did a good job outlining what the plan is. Just a couple bullets to, bullet points to reiterate, the demolition program you said is going to stay intact funded.
That's correct. 900,000 for next year is what we're recommending.
And the neighborhood mini grants as well. I think we all know from our constituents how well received that was, so I think that will be well, well welcomed again. The alley and porch light program, vacant lot clearing, that goes along with some of the violence prevention things, so I'm happy to see that continuing as well. Regarding the homeless funding, at this point, have there been any discussions with any of our part, the continuum or where do you, we stand? That's a lot of money. We want to make sure that we're very targeted.
Well, it's not a lot of money when it comes to this. Running the Haven, which is the 15-bed shelter that is operated by Phoenix, costs about $400,000 a year to operate. So we're looking at some potential options for other facilities that could be other emergency shelters and then looking at longer-term permanent supportive housing options. This would be setting aside some of those dollars for either both capital and operating expenses, if we could look at that. And we've had discussions with some of the providers and the continuum of care. Director Doolin and his team will be meeting with a group tomorrow to continue to have the conversations about homelessness in the community and we're trying to come together to bring to you some solutions and we've got some asks out as well of other institutional partners to help us in that endeavor so that we can come back to you with some solutions. But this would be money to help us to go directly towards either capital expenses or towards operating expenses.
I assumed you were going to say that's for the capital side of it and I'm a little surprised to hear that we would be funding operations.
Well, it, we did in this past year with the Haven, I mean, working with Phoenix and, and, you know, that was something that we, we did for, you know, a period of time to help and assist them. And I think that, that we've got to look at all options in terms of what we can do because having people living on the street is not.
But like you said, if that's 400,000 a year, I mean, that's barely two years' coverage, so I think we need to be a little more strategic in having something that's going to have a longer-term impact. I would also encourage the discussions tomorrow, perhaps, when you meet with the other partners, that, that besides the capacity needs that the community has, I think we've all have heard from Jolt, from Continuum, from Phoenix, the fact that there's a certain population that doesn't want to be housed in the traditional shelter. So I don't know how that gets addressed, but I think we're missing out on something critical if we don't acknowledge that part of the puzzle. So I would just encourage that tomorrow, as the discussions continue, that, that we keep that population targeted as well. On page 53, the five-year projections, I love that, Director Krady, thank you, and realizing that five-year projections are just that, projections. I think one thing that many of us on the council are proud of is the fact that we've got the fund balance over the 25% policy and that wasn't something that came about lightly. Looking at, at the narrative here on that, on page 53, you said with, with, using some of fund balance for the pension obligations by 2028, we'll dip below that. And now there's no crystal ball, but I mean, is this clearly seeing that fund balance tapped for the pension obligations? You indicate declines through 2030. Any, any color commentary you can provide or would be willing to add to that, either one of you?
I think what will continue to be our headwind, and I know I've said it a few times this evening, is it's really that increase in the public safety pension cost. We're seeing really the cost grow, the cost growth increased about a half a million dollars a year, but really that means this year it's 2.9, the following year it's 3.4, following year it's about four. And so really looking at that differential in our reserves, that differential is about 17 million. And so you can see how quickly we're going to go through that reserve level as those costs continue to grow.
Mr. Manager, we were, several, all of us were at IML and talking about the 2040 deadline that the state has arbitrarily imposed on us. I spoke with Brad Cole briefly on it. Is there any indication from our House leadership that that's even on the table?
You know, the, what's been, kind of been discussed and what's been going hand-in-hand with that is trying to adjust the concerns that have been raised about the safe harbor provisions in the tier-two pension system. And the concern there is there's an effort to want to weaken the tier-two benefit levels and make them more like tier-one. Doing that would be a step backwards and would increase our costs. And if the trade-off is a longer amortization period, but to move back towards everyone being in tier-one, I think we should say no. I think we should continue to, to make the payments and stay on the schedule we have. And I think ultimately what's going to happen, and I think we're going to, we'll get there at some point in time. Right now, we're, we're a little more than 50% funded between police and fire. So we have about $360 to $380 million of unfunded liabilities and about $380 million of funds that are being invested. We have to be 90% funded, so we've got to make up, you know, almost all of that $360 million by 2040. And we're going to get to a point, but the difficult part of this path is going to be the next 10 years. It's going to be, how do we get to that point where we're closer to the end? It's a, it's a big hill we're climbing. Every year, we're paying more and more towards pensions, but we'll get to a point where we can look at, at cutting off the top of the mountain and pushing that out and borrowing out and looking at pension obligation bonds. But it's, it's got to be at the right time. If we do it too soon and the market, which the, the stock market's at incredible highs right now, if it tanks and we get underwater with our pension obligation bonds, not only are you now paying hard debt on the pension bonds, but you're going to have to make up the shortfalls that happen with the pension investments. And it just means you're going to be paying more. So we just got to find the right time when all of that is going to hit and it's probably 10 years from now, when we get a little closer towards the end, you know, when it's 2034 or 2032 and we've got eight to six years left, that then we can stretch that payment out over 20 years. But the pain is going to be from 2024 to 2032.
Is there a target that you would not want to exceed as far as bonding the dollar amount that would be bonded? Has that, any thought been given to that or?
I don't really, to me, it's not really about the number. Yes, there would have to be some logistical items we'd have to address. Right, right now, the council has a 10% limitation on GO bonds. We'd have to amend that ordinance because this would, this would exceed beyond 10% of our EAV. That would be a consideration. It's more about entering into the market at a time that it's most advantageous for us to get that spread between what we're paying on those bonds and what we can earn with them invested actively in the pension funds. Right now, obviously, where, where borrowing rates are, because we do have to use on a taxable basis, the market's a little upside down and us having enough of that spread to give us cushion, to really see some savings in extending out the life of the, of the, of the bonds.
Thank you for that. And I think it's important for us that we, as much as this discussion can glaze over our eyes sometimes, I think it's an important discussion that, that we don't lose track of and it's, it's going to be something that future councils will be talking about as well. So let's make sure that we're setting the stage for those future councils as, as those deadlines loom. I just had scribbled a note to be sure that somebody tonight mentioned the trash collection fund and that we're paying $1.4 million down on that this year. And since Councilman Sears is not here, I thought we need to at least acknowledge that on his behalf. The other last comment, well, actually I had two more, staffing the 13 part-time positions in the Public Works Department, switching to full-time, I think that's a, a great move. And I know many in the North Valley who were part of the early stages of the stormwater utility work being done, had concerns about the maintenance and follow-through on that. So I'm going to make sure that they're aware that we're aware of those issues and that we are addressing that in a timely manner, so. The last thing I had was about the Sheridan Road drainage and I don't see anyone from Public Works here, so I'll reach out to Director Powers offline. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do appreciate the hard work. You didn't put any out of this presentation, Director Krady. It does look like on page 29, the green bar gets cut off for public safety pensions. So I got a little excited when I saw that. It looks like it, it looks like it levels off, but that's, I'm sure that's a mistake because it's supposed to go to 42.3. So I mean, it looks like a pretty, pretty, pretty much stair steps until about 2034. Is that my understanding or 2032?
Yeah, another representation of that would be in the budget book on page 52. You have what you kind of see as a gentle slope that in that last five years really accelerates towards that end goal in 2040.
Okay. And this is, this is to reach 90% funded by 2040. I, I think from what I've read, granted that I haven't gotten too deep in it, but 80% funded is considered a healthy target, right?
Yeah, but that's set by the General Assembly and, and, you know, they would have to set that. I think the rating agencies would say they, they want to see everyone at 100% funding. There was an editorial in the Tribune just yesterday from the, or Sunday, from the Civic Federation where they're advocating for 100% funding of all state pension systems, including local pension systems, which would be our police and fire pensions. So I'm not sure if we, if we would get them to say 80%, if they would change that.
Okay, that's not encouraging. So, well, we'll have to, we'll have to keep, keep lobbying then. But yeah, I do want to say I do agree with Councilman Grab with regard to the grocery tax. I, I think that it's well-intentioned by Springfield. I think a lot of people have good intentions in wanting to repeal a tax that is regressive in taxes, you know, the rich and the poor are the same. But it is a pass-through and it does, it does hurt us and it hurts municipalities across the state, having to make a tough decision to pass a tax to replace it. And there's not an easy decision when it comes to, you know, making it progressive, making it, you know, more onerous on the rich than the poor because we can't do income taxes. You know, there's, there's only so much we can do, you know, luxury taxes or, you know, alcohol taxes. And I don't, I don't know if we can make up that $4 million unfortunately without just instituting our own grocery tax. So I mean, that's something else we'll have to lobby Springfield for, to repeal this, this repeal. But I mean, I know that doesn't kick in until 2026, but it's, it's definitely something in the back of our minds. But again, I appreciate the presentation. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
Yes, report backs. I would like our administration to provide the council and our taxpayers who are listening and at home and who will be listening at a future meeting, want a precise dollar figure on how much we have spent to address the problems of the unhoused. I hesitate to use the term homeless because I think we have a home for everybody. We have people, as Councilman Regenbach just mentioned, who are declining these services. So before we get beaten over our head, and frankly, I'm not going to take it, we need the taxpayers to know what we have been spending on this problem. Meanwhile, other communities address this problem. They address it. Take East Peoria, take Pekin, you can read about it in the newspaper. Oh, where did they go, Peoria? Is there no limit to our beneficence or to the degree to which we will enable people? All these numbers here, folks, will fall into place if we provide a decent quality of living for our people. People who don't have to feel safe when they leave our downtown offices. People who don't, who are tired of hearing gunshots at night. I get comments made, oh gosh, yeah, I was sleeping very well until all of a sudden the gunshots went off at 6 o'clock this morning. Did you hear it, Councilman? Folks, we're in a world of hurt and we've got to start addressing these problems. As I said, if you don't want to see the light, you're going to feel the heat. But I believe our best days are ahead. These numbers will be good if we keep people excited about living in this city, in our neighborhoods, and sending their children to our schools. Manager, did you get my request on that?
Yes.
And then also, in the past three years, gosh, we heard how important it was to do violence prevention programs, anti-violence prevention programs. We apparently have unwisely used those funds. That was an eight to three vote. What is our plan now to address the growing scandal? The growing scandal as it relates to the fact that we have not been able to field a team to deal with this violence and have violence prevention money going to agencies that will effectively use it? I'm for spending money, but I expect it to be used effectively and efficiently. And I'm not so sure that the money that we have been spending, I know for a fact that it's had minimal impact. And I'm not so sure that all this money we've spent on the unhoused has been spent properly. I do think too, it would be nice for us to know, Manager, the status of the psychiatric hospital on Route 91. Is that still coming? And is that an OSF private entity?
Right.
Collaboration thing because I'm sorry, 36 beds ain't going to cut it.
We'll, we'll get you another report back on that as well.
Also, Joe Doolin, I am not going to feel guilty about this when I turn in tonight. When I said core basic services, police, fire, public works, and Mr. Blaney, same thing with you. To a great extent, when you think about community development, there was concern about what was going to happen to your budget. Community development does so many great things, but a huge part of what they do is a quasi-police function, whether it's zoning or code enforcement. Think about it. Think about it, folks. Think about it. And, yeah, it, it's, it's commonplace for the new thinkers to say, well, that broken window theory no longer applies. Yes, it does apply. And, Councilman Kelly, I, I must say to you, when we go out to the neighborhood meetings, we hear about all these things, don't we, Director Doolin? And it gets very granular when you get down to a particular neighborhood and they're talking about crime in the neighborhood, delinquency in the neighborhood, properties that aren't being maintained. I think our chief has mentioned, I think when Chief Escheveria came to town. So, you know, it's very hard to have safety when you have a town that looks like a war zone. And so we are making great strides. I believe we're moving in the right direction, but I guess we just can't move fast enough, but we will continue to do it. So I didn't mean to leave you out, uh, Mr. Blaney or Mr. Doolin and any other department head who's not here but should be here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, one thing I did not, uh, say when I had the floor some time ago is to just thank the team, uh, for really fine reports. Appreciate that. I, Director Craddy, you and I have spoken, uh, since you've shown up, our financial reports are very clear and, uh, easy to understand and brief enough, I guess, and, uh, that's to your, to your credit and I want to publicly thank you. I would like to comment on, um, uh, or perhaps expand upon Councilman Valpula's, uh, request. Part of our job here, uh, you know, the, the manager's job is to run the city. The manager's job is to oversee the departments of the city, carrying out the policies that this body here has set. It is up to us to get creative. The manager can, can be quite creative, that's fine, but that's our job. We have to figure out our way out of this and we've got, we have some time, although we've, we've just been going along and going along and going along. This is, and, and I have been going along and going along. It's, it's not just you guys, it's, it's all of us. We need to think of some things, oddball things, weird things, okay? Talk to each other about them, okay? We're the ones who've been elected to do that sort of thing. Instead, uh, and the manager's job, and he can be as creative as he wants and that's, I'm, I'm very happy if he is, but his job is, is to follow our policy lead. So, uh, let's not sit back and wait and see what he brings us. Let's try to do some creative thinking ourselves. Perhaps not, perhaps nine out of the ten ideas that we might come up with are not good ideas, but maybe that one is. I think we have to get away from convention. Convention has not served us. Convention has not served most cities, especially most northern cities in our country. We're all kind of in the same boat. So, let's take it upon ourselves in this next week and two weeks, three weeks and all that, to try to think out of the box. This, it isn't easy. Okay, enough said. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I've got one last, uh, request, report back request, and it's actually for Corporation Council Hayes. How many distilleries, uh, cannabis distilleries do we have in the city? Is it three or four? Six?
There are six permitted by council's limit.
Right, how many do we have?
I think there are four operating, but I would like the opportunity to report back and I'll give you the exact numbers as well as, there's a couple in process, sort of, so I'll get you a report back at the next meeting so that it's accurate.
Okay, um, what I'm looking to know is that there is a requirement by the state that those entities donate a percent of their revenues to a not-for-profit organization. And there may be some extra language there and I, I don't remember what the percent is. Uh, but what I would like to know, of those three to four operating dispensaries that we have, what is their, do they report, they have to report their annual revenues to the state, I'm sure, because if a percentage is required to go to not-for-profits, I want to know what not-for-profits they're donating that percent to, so that, so that we're aware.
I'll include that information in the report pack.
Okay.
I'll also share and reiterate what Director Craddy was pointing to.
Okay.
There's a significant limitation on the Department of Revenue's ability to share information about revenue for retail entities. And so they're reluctant to allow us to disclose anything that would expose specific retailers' revenues to public inquiry.
Okay.
So we signed an agreement with the Department of Revenue to be very limited and controlled about the information that we're able to get and only few people in our organization can and we can't disclose that. If we get to fully six, we probably get to the point where we can make some reports in general, but not with regard to specific retailers, in any regard. I'll get a report back to you about the number of dispensaries we have, what are, what's in process, as well as whatever insight I can provide you about any sort of revenues and not-for-profit contributions that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I think we've exhausted the questions and report bags here, so I'm gonna turn to you, Madam Clark.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and we have not received any cards. And I do not believe we have an executive session, is that correct? So then we would be out of adjournment.
I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cash your ballots.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your service.